It's not on. Oh, there it is. Councilman Rozansky, would you join us, please?
Hey, what about Councilman Curry?
We know who's up for reelection.
No, there's no political in this.
Wait, what did he say? I'm running for election this year. It's gonna work.
I'll call the regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order for March 11th, 2008. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will show that all members are present except for Mayor Pro Tem Degel, who is excused.
Okay, do we have a closed session report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Rozansky, followed by invocation by Reverend Dr. Dennis Short, pastor, Harbor Christian Church, president Newport Beach Mesa Irvine Interfaith Council.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Loving God, we give thanks for this magnificent weather and this beautiful day in Newport Beach. I give thanks for the wonderful community in which we live, thankful for these council members and all who work for our city. I pray that this council's decision to seek limits on flights and on the expansion from the airport comes to fruition. Help us, oh God, at this season of Easter and Passover to be good neighbors that care for our city, for each other, and for all of our neighbors far and near. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Short. And usually, we don't have any presentations tonight, so Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
I do have one announcement. The McFadden Square Memorial groundbreaking, this isn't McDonald's Memorial, is it? The McFadden Square Memorial groundbreaking will take place on Monday, March 17th, at the Newport Pier. We invite everyone to come and join us with that. It'll be a wonderful event. We also invite anyone who would like to memorialize their own family as a part of the history of Newport Beach and buy a paver or perhaps make a larger donation for as little as $250, you can live forever in the history of Newport Beach. That's a bargain. I invite everyone to give some serious consideration of that and help us out. We've still got a little ways to go to collect enough money by way of donations to pay for the entire project, and we think that would be nice. And the other thing is, I'd like to thank Councilmember Curry for inviting me to the mayor's prayer breakfast this morning. That was a very nice event at which we were able to honor Mayor Selig as well as have a nice discussion from Tim Salmon of the Anaheim Angels. So, thanks, Keith.
Councilman Rozansky?
Not so much of an announcement. Have we made any determination on that outreach meeting?
Yes, it would be the study session next meeting.
Okay, then I would like to announce that we're planning on having a study session item, our first meeting in April, April 8th, with regard to proposed plans for the Sunset Ridge Park. However, due to the fact that it is Easter break or, you know, spring break, whatever, and the schools are gonna be out, a lot of the people might otherwise be interested in attending that meeting or are gonna be gone, it looks like we're gonna accelerate that meeting to our last meeting in March during the study session. So, anybody who's interested in that, that study session item is being moved up to our next council meeting. So, if you're interested in plans for Sunset Ridge Park, I think most of the council has some ideas of what's going on there, but everybody's gonna get exposure to at least where we are at this point and give direction to staff as to where we'd like to go. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, we're going to have on March 19th, a community outreach on Banning Ranch and what should happen there. That will be at, from 7:00 to 9:00 here in council chambers. And then on March 24th and April 2nd, again here at 6:00 PM, we will have community outreach on Buck Gully and erosion control plans for that area.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think most of us had the opportunity over the course of the last two weeks to read about the issue in our neighboring cities up the coast, particularly in Long Beach, of sex offender concentration and the steps that other cities are taking to address this issue. Fortunately, it appears that that is not a significantly acute problem in Newport Beach, and so what I'd like to do is ask, at this point in time, is ask for staff to prepare a study session involving the chief of police and the city attorney in looking at the sufficiency of our laws to prevent that in the city of Newport Beach and also to brief the public of the steps that we're taking to avoid concentrations such as they're dealing with in Long Beach here in Newport Beach.
Okay, Councilman Webb?
I have two items. First one is, on February 27th, I attended the dinner of the Newport Balboa Rotary, and it was a dinner to honor the 1-1 Marines who have just returned from Iraq. Members of the 1-1 were there, including the CO of the 1-1, Lieutenant Colonel Jeff Connors, and the wives of the Marines present were there also. And I presented a proclamation to the Marines at that event, and I'd like to reread that tonight. And whereas on December 9th, 2003, on behalf of the residents of the city of Newport Beach, the Newport Beach City Council adopted the United States Marine Corps, 1st Battalion, 1st Marines. And whereas shortly after the adoption of 1-1, the Newport Beach 1-1 Marine Adoption Committee was formed for the purpose of creating and maintaining a supportive relationship for the benefit of the Marines and Marine families of 1-1. And whereas this supportive relationship has been embraced by the Newport Balboa Rotary, which has received 1st Battalion 1st Marines as one of its own, and whereas the Marines of 1-1 have recently returned from deployment in Iraq, during which members of the 1-1 have made the ultimate sacrifice while in the performance of their duties as United States Marines, now therefore, I, Edward Selig, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, recognizes 1st Battalion's 1st Marines through its service to our country and honors those who have fought in battle and returned home, and those who have fallen for their bravery, and further recognizes all 1-1 Marines for proudly committing themselves to their duty in the highest traditions of the United States Marine Corps. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused this seal of the city of Newport Beach to affix here to this 27th day of February 2008. Edward D. Selig, Mayor. It is my honor and privilege to present those to those Marines, and we should all be thankful for all that they do for us. Second item I'd like to mention is that on March 1st, I had the privilege of attending the City Arts Commission Annual Jury Art Show. This is their one and only art exhibition of the year, and it's a favorite event for the arts commissioners as well as the Arts Foundation. It was held up at the Friends Room at the City Library. It's a show that's been going on for a number of years, and it's growing every year. This was their largest show to date. There was a lot of creative artwork from residents of our city there, a lot of talent that we have, and some of the artwork was for sale. I had the honor of being the presenter of their awards, and in fact, I gave one to the city manager's wife. Was that a conflict of interest?
No, because I wasn't there, and I got in trouble for that. I came after the presentation, too.
Anyway, it was a great event, so I would encourage anyone to watch for it for next year. There was some really good artwork there.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar, items 1 through 16 and supplemental item 21, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing, although I think you're going to take care of that one. Okay, nothing.
Councilmember Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Curry?
No items to pull.
Councilman Webb?
I do not wish to pull any items, however, I would like to register a no vote on item four, which is the item related to the tax exchange agreement with the County of Orange for the Santa Ana Country Club and South Manchester Drive.
Okay, and I'd like to pull item S-21 and have it considered with, was it 18? Yes, item 18. Staff, do you have any items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number 12, really, continue item number 12, the retiree medical program, and continue that until our next city council meeting.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item? Okay, seeing no one, Councilman Webb, do you want to make the motion on this?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar with item number 12 being removed from the, continued, and me registering a no vote on item number four.
And item 21 being considered with?
And 21 being included with item 18.
18. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on our agenda is oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Hen, or Curry?
Just to note that the finance committee will be meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2:30.
Okay, Councilman Webb? And I have none. Well, it's going too fast. Public comments, Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, city council members, staff. I want to thank you as president of the Central Newport Beach Community Association for the landscaping, and I wanted to thank the department, and I'm not sure which one, puts in landscaping under the star pine at Medina and Balboa. They've done a beautiful job, we've got roses, it's lovely, and we of Central Newport, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's the General Services Department.
Thank you.
We'll take the credit.
Hello, my name is Deanna Fafmartin. I'm a resident of Big Canyon Townhomes on Ford Road. I live at 52 Seepine Lane. I'm here to ask the city to place on the agenda to consider making Newport Beach a no-smoking city and to pave the way and help different groups like the Orange County Tobacco Education Coalition, who I was at their meeting today, to help spearhead this, to help residents. I personally am impacted by marijuana smoking and cigarette smoking coming into my home by the residents below me. The residents below are 85 years old, and their caregivers are smoking, or their caretaker, I should say, that live in now relatives are smoking marijuana, and they claim to have it be medicinal. And every day marijuana comes into my home, as well as cigarette smoking. They are taking care of seniors. I have asked the police department to please notify the possibility of senior abuse, and they said they have no reason to do that, which I don't know if you can help me on that. But I'm here particularly on the quality of air that we breathe, and I understand that you currently are having neighbors upset regarding the rehab places that are going on with the secondhand smoke. And I would like to see if my issue with residents, if anyone could come forward, or you know anyone else that's upset about secondhand smoke, if they'd like to join the coalition and become a volunteer to help learn how to make our city go smoke-free. I'd like to be in contact with someone. Can you help in any way?
Well, the city manager can give you his card, and you can have to measure.
I've had a couple of emails from residents interested in that, but I don't, off the top of my head, I can't think of their names right now. But so there is interest, there is support out there for you.
Yes, and this coalition had the American Lung Association, American Cancer Association, they're all coming together, the Orange County Health Department, and so if that's something that your city's interested in, you have a whole group of people, and their website will be launched on St. Patrick's Day, and you could put a link to their site, and they're all coming together to hope to make California, of course, you know, the first state to go smoke-free, but we can do it city after city, just one city at a time. Now, have your business card, and I'd love to know how you could help. I finished my city homeowners association meeting tonight, I just got back, and they're all on board. And I understand you have 120 homeowners associations in Newport Beach, and I'm developing the residents' response team, and you could refer people to me. I'd like to put everyone together and see if one housing area after another could go smoke-free.
Okay, well, you can discuss it with him outside the council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments. Planning Commission agenda and oral status report. Mr. Leppo?
Mayor and city council, last Thursday night, there were three items on the planning commission agenda. One was a variance in modification request on Little Balboa Island, 201 Crystal Avenue, that was continued. The direction was to shrink the project a little bit more consistent with the neighborhood. Second item was, were the various entitlement requests for the Hope Hospital master plan. After spending a lot of time going over more of the details on the sound wall and on landscaping and lighting concerns, planning commission continued to the meeting of the 20th, and I think things will be wrapped up at that time. Lastly, we gave a status report on the administrative hearing officers taking of procedural issues and briefs on the Rock and Roll Fury provocation permit. We will be taking another update back to planning commission on the 20th, but that hearing by the hearing officer has not concluded yet.
Questions? Okay, any questions, Mr. Leppo? Thank you, good report. Okay, our next item is continued business, item number 18, confirmation of appointments to the City Hall Design Committee. And we took supplemental item S-21 with that, which is officially entitled the Resolution 2008, mending the resolution that establishes the City Hall Design Committee. And I'll just give a report from the building committee. We're gonna request that these items be continued to the next council meeting, these two items. We were, in a very short period of time, we were extremely successful in getting applicants. We had 24 well-qualified applicants to the City Hall Design Committee, three landscape architects and 21 architects. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get everyone that we wanted to interview scheduled for interviews, so we did one round of interviews yesterday? No, two days ago, and, it was yesterday, time's going fast. And we're gonna do our second round on Friday, so we'll have a report out to the city council in the regular agenda packet for the next meeting. I see someone wants to comment, so I guess I'll ask for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Alan Beek, and I believe that this is the item I want to comment on, that planning for the new city hall is premature until we know where the new city hall is going to be, and that is still a matter which is very much up in the air. As somebody notable has said, it ain't over until it's over, and Measure B is still tied up in the court, and it may very well be that the city hall will not be where some people seem to think it's going to be. You couldn't build it there because that land is dedicated as open space, and you can't put buildings in it, and the fact the Irvine Company says they don't care whether you put a city hall there doesn't mean that you have permission to do it, you just have permission of the Irvine Company, that doesn't mean you have the permission of the law. And some people have said, well, the people have spoken, we're gonna go ahead and do what the people have told us. That wasn't the people speaking, that was the money speaking. The law says we all get the right of free speech, but some people get to whisper and some get to use a bullhorn, and the bullhorn's dominated. But until it is over, it would be premature for you to spend any money on planning a city hall on that site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, the city council has taken a position on that and designated that site, and Robin, do you want to comment on the restrictions that are or not on that site for doing a city hall?
Well, it's, it's, there are restrictions on the site currently, but the Irvine Company has agreed to change those restrictions and work with the council to do so. It's my opinion that the CIOSA agreement does not prevent the city council from changing the use of that property, and it's also my opinion that the status of Measure B does not impact the council's decision on whether to go ahead and build a city hall on the park site property if they so choose.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Pardon me, but I think we missed standing up for item number?
Can you state your name, please?
Richard Tanzer. I filled out one of those yellow cards, and I think you went by us on ordinance number three, kennels in West Santa Ana Heights, and I apologize for not standing up at the time you called it, but I didn't realize you were going past.
Well, we've already taken action on that item.
Are you for it or against it?
I'm against it. I'm vice president of the National Cat Protection Society. We're a nonprofit cat shelter here in Newport Beach. We've been here since 1994, and I'd like to make a few comments about the proposed municipal code, which we think adversely impacts shelters, and I think the city council should be aware of some of the negative effects of the proposed ordinance. Sorry for not standing up, but I didn't realize we needed to align our putting our yellow cards.
Well, the only way we can reconsider that is at the end of the meeting with the motion for reconsideration from the council, so if you want to hang around to the end of the meeting, looks like it's not gonna be a real long one.
Mayor?
Yes?
They did already, the council did already take action on that. That was an introduction of the new ordinance. I don't know if you've had a chance to speak with the police department about the changes to the ordinance and discuss with them the changes and how they might adversely impact the operators, or the, I guess it's the kennel operators. But one other suggestion would be for the speaker to go ahead and meet with the police department, discuss the concerns with them, look over the ordinance and see how the ordinance impacts it, and then there will be another opportunity to bring that up at the meeting on the 25th.
Okay.
And then the council can either choose to make amendments and reintroduce it, or to go ahead and adopt it at that time.
That's a good suggestion. So, just watch the agenda for the next meeting, and it'll be a second reading of the ordinance, and you'll be able to comment at that time.
And you think we should meet, I should, we should meet with the?
I suggest you meet with the police chief, or whoever he would designate that's working under him on that ordinance changes. The intent was to change the ordinance, and the ordinance was intended to continue the county operation, so you could go ahead and talk with him and let him know, voice your concerns with him, and then he will let us know, and we can work through that.
And then I'll have another opportunity to speak at the next?
On the 25th.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilman Hen?
One other piece of advice, if you do wish to discuss that item next time, watch for it on a consent calendar and ask for the item to be pulled, and then it can be discussed.
Okay.
You'll have an opportunity to discuss it.
Thank you very much.
And for the gentleman, Lieutenant Shulman was here just for that item. I think he left as soon as it cleared consent, so he would be the one to contact in the police department. Lieutenant Steve Shulman.
I'm familiar with that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You know, that's something, maybe we should explain that occasionally, because I know if you go to the regional board, for example, and you put your card in, they call you to speak, and so I think maybe more than one person's been confused because they put in the card and they think their name is gonna be called and don't realize they're still supposed to pull something on the consent calendar.
Okay. All right, any other comments on items 18 or 21? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for motion.
Remove the continuance to next meeting.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number 19, which is the Marina Park Concept Plan, Community Center, and Sailing Center Building Placement Size and Height. Mr. Kiff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm gonna turn your attention to the staff report, and then we do have something for the folks at home on the screen that's, those are mostly view simulations. But the item before you today was brought back to you by the Council Citizens Committee on Marina Park Design, of which the mayor, Mr. Webb and Mr. Hen are members, along with about nine community members. And as you'll recall, you last saw this concept plan that we're gonna talk about in October and November of 2007. You approved that and directed the staff and the committee to enter the schematic design phase, so to further flesh out that design. In the course of some of the conversations with the committee, a number of residents came forward and discussed two key things with the committee, and the committee decided to bring that back to you, all six of you tonight, for either ratification or potential change. And those things are the size and building height of the community center and the height of the sailing center. And again, I'll show you what were specifically those buildings, so you can talk to the model a little bit. So, again, once more, the size and height of the community center and the height of the sailing center. And the committee also asked a couple of issues in that context, in that context, and that was, will the community center be used at that site? And we have Wes Morgan and Sean Levin here to address that, and that may be something you might want to have them address in questions after some public comment. And then we do have the architect, the architectural team, which is Dan Herman and Tim Bundy. Dan's with Rabbin Herman Design, Tim Bundy's with Bundy Finkel Architecture, and Tim did the design for both buildings. And then, as noted, Dan also has some view simulations that will allow you to see the mass and height of the building from various perspectives. These are mostly public views that we look at, and that's important because the LCP and the Coastal Act directs that you be cognizant of public views. Just to remind you, the city council doesn't have an obligation to protect private views. The city does not have that obligation, but you'll hear those issues raised tonight. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I may ask you how you'd like to handle this, if you want to have some of the public come up, or whether you want to roll into some of the view sims or a presentation by Wes.
Well, why don't we hear from the people that I think are here that are concerned about the project, and then we can go through and present the images and have Wes talk about the community center.
Great.
So, at this time, I'll invite public comments on the Marina Park project.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Louise Funenburg, president of Central Newport Beach Community Association. I emailed you all a letter, and it's out on the table for those who haven't seen it, but we at Central Newport would like to have the 35-foot height limit held, and we're very pleased to have this park in our backyard, you might say, and more bay views you can get, and the more open space, the better, so please hold down the height. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ernie Bakenny, and I'm here to, hopefully the city council will ratify their earlier decision and restate the height requirement for these buildings. There's a variety of different reasons. It seems that, I've been outspoken in a lot of the meetings, and the reason is, is that this is across the street from my house. So it's easy to look at me and say, "Well, here's the guy who's having his view blocked, but it's okay for everybody else." And that is not the case, I don't believe that. I believe the citizens of Newport Beach don't want a 56-foot-high building. I do believe they want to see the bay. It's hard enough to get to the bay today. A lot of people probably forgot what the bay looks like, because unless you have a boat, you can't get to it, it's surrounded by buildings. Going back to the beginning, the first meeting, I was notified, because notification's been a little sketchy for me, but that may be, I don't know what's the cause, whether it's the mail, myself, or whatever. But I, I, when I was notified of what was happening, I came to the very first meeting. At that meeting, the, the city council did approve the plans, and at the time, there was a footnote, because there was concerns at that time of the height and the mass of the building. And this has been an ongoing mantra through every meeting I've attended, where it's, we footnoted that the citizens of Newport don't really, are concerned about the height and don't really want a 56-foot-high building there. But yet, we continue to approve and push forward. Some of the reasons why I think it's, shouldn't be so high is Newport Beach is, the bay is a beautiful body of water. It's talked about all over the world, and I don't think we need an architectural statement, as you saw in Louise's letter, because I agree with everything she's said here, to really say, "This is Newport Beach." I mean, the bay is what it's all about. We have a beautiful bay, and that should be the focus, not, not the building. It's not just the views of the private sector, it's the public views. When you come down Newport Boulevard, I'm sorry, Bell Bowler, Newport Boulevard at that point in time, you do have open views of the hills currently, and that will go away. So it's not just, I'm not just saying this because I'm just going to stare at it from across the street, but it's other views that are being blocked, not just, not just my own. I believe that this, this park should have maximum open space, and the building should be there to support the park and the marina, which the marina is, is something that is a wonderful thing for Newport Beach, and, and that's really what the focus should be all about, boating, having access to the bay, and not necessarily all these things that are going to go into the perceived community center. Even though I know there's a need for a community center, I don't believe that's the focus here. And I do believe that the community center and the mass of it, and, and the height of the building and everything else, and the parking that goes with this community center at that location, is going to take away from parking for people that just want to go to the park and have access to the bay. So you can imagine trying to get to park just so you go, go to the bay and having, having it being monopolized by daycare. So I really think that's a bad, bad use of, of space there. Some of the other things, I just don't see how we could build a 56-foot-high building and not live up to our own standards. It sets a very bad precedent. I mean, you know, I'm building a house also, and, you know, if I wanted to put a windmill 56 feet high, I mean, that's going to benefit the entire, you know, country because of the energy, but would that be a thing to do? And I don't think so. I mean, it's just, 56 feet high is just ridiculous when the standard's 35 feet. And, you know, I'm sure during the presentation next, they'll say, "Well, that's only 4% of the, of the building height of the sailing center, or 7% of the, of the rooftop." But imagine 7% of, you know, my, my house's roof's 2,000 square feet, so, you know, we'd have a 50-square-foot structure going 56 feet high. It's just, it's just not right. So, I mean, those are some of the points. I mean, one of the things that I'm nervous about tonight is this is the last opportunity to speak out, because in the, at the very end of, of Dave's letter here, it said that this will be the last time it spoke about. It's unfortunate that a lot of my neighbors who feel the same way feel that this is a kind of a rubber-stamp process, and I hate to use that terminology, but I asked them to show up tonight, and they said, "Well, what's the difference? I mean, you're going to go up there and talk about it? This thing's been planned for a long time, it's just going to get pushed through." So this isn't really about me, even though it seems that way sometimes, because I'm sitting directly across from it, but I think it's, it's very important to leave something of, of beauty there and really emphasize what a beautiful bay that we have there for people that visit from all over the world and not get focused-
Can you wrap it up, sir?
Okay, and not get focused in on, on just having a, a structure there, especially when you're blowing the heights out from 35 to 56 feet. It's just, I can't imagine doing that, not living to our own standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address us on this issue?
I guess this is Marina Park. I came in late to see the stuff on the screen. Larry Porter, Newport Heights. I was one of the guys at the very beginning who helped the campaign for Measure L to make it a park, so that the trailers would go bye-bye. And at the 11th hour, and you guys know I'm fairly close to the process, I find there's going to be this ginormous cement structures in what was to be a park. And, and all the stuff that was passed around that the people voted on, two to one, that it's to be a park, there was no depiction whatsoever of these ginormous cement structures. And so I'm here as a citizen to say that violates, in my mind, and I think in others' minds, really what the spirit of a park is. Plus, is it something, you guys are thinking of 20 million bucks that rub your fingers together, and here comes the money for something that doesn't equate with a park? And I sense this has all been done, not entirely, of course, but not really open as it should have been. So I'm here to say, timeout, and let's stop moving forward with just more and more cement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council?
Kathleen Callahan. I'm also neighboring the park, across the street from the park, and I would like to agree with the two previous speakers. We felt, when we voted on this, that there was a choice between a hotel going in and a park. My idea of a park was park benches and green grass and trees and a little sandlot for the children. We had no concept, and it was never talked or divulged, that there would be a huge structure there. And I feel this was railroaded through, that we voted basically to not have a hotel, not have as much density there, and suddenly we are presented with this plan. I was at the American Legion when it was presented there, and I think most people were kind of aghast and dumbfounded to say, "What happened to the park? We are suddenly stuck with this giant recreation center that nobody had any idea was going to be put in there." And I feel that, again, it was rubber-stamped by the city council, pushed through, and we really didn't have any say about it. I don't think it's appropriate place for the park. I think we need less traffic on the Boulevard. I think we have a beach out there that we can use and an open space there that could be truly a park, not a recreation center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address us?
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Jan Vanersdoodt, I live in Newport Heights. I'm speaking somewhat, I'm speaking on behalf of SPA. We had a meeting last night, and we decided, made a motion, and voted to request that you postpone consideration of the community center tonight until we find out what's going to happen to this building. Because this building, this city council chambers and the original city hall, if you, if the city decides to retain this site rather than sell it as a result of Measure B, then this place could be used for a community center, and you don't have to put a community center in Marina Park. Therefore, keeping Marina Park more open, a more open window to the bay, as previous speakers have said, and that's what we've wanted all along, we've wanted that to be primarily open space. And I should mention that Bill Ficker, when he was going around town asking for a yes vote on Measure B, he would bring his plan for the, for this site. And I agree with, I agree with his plan for the site. I also think you should consider his plan for the city hall above the library, because his plan had certain merits to it, once the people voted that that should be the place where we put city hall. But with Marina Park, we have the opportunity now to utilize this site, keep, to keep the historical characteristics of this site, city council chambers, the original city hall, use that as a community center, and simply subtract the community center from the Marina Park site. Still keep the sailing center, but that community center over there may be unneeded if we decide that we want to keep this site, and I encourage you to think about that and postpone your decision on tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Billings with Protect Our Parks. I would just like to address the, the topic tonight with, first, just a little history. I guess our group, Protect Our Parks, which Jan was a part of, and, and, and others in the community, really, I'm not saying this to toot our horn, but we're really the ones that are responsible for where we are today. Because of the vote, No on L, it was decided to keep the zoning parkland, and from that point forward, three, four years ago, we, we started developing a concept plan. So that being said, we surveyed the community, and in that concept plan, the vision, the concept that we have today, or it's not called a concept plan anymore, it's more of a, what, design plan, is the same concept and vision that we had back then. All the, the elements that were in the plan then, there was Girl Scout house, tot lot, basketball tennis, now it's basketball, tennis have been relocated to another site, another end, but that's on, on the east end, west end. The other end, it was anchored by the aquatic slash sailing center and a community center. And then the marina at that time, of course, wasn't part of it, and then that's evolved, and we've all come together, compromised, back and forth, and, and now the portion, there's a portion of marina. But tonight, we're not talking about the marina, no. So I guess the first point is that, that our original vision, based on surveying the community, was that there would be a community center, and that community center was, was based on, there was already one there, and when we surveyed the community, said, "Hey, you know, let's keep a, a community center here." We, we put a place on, on the, on the plan for a community center next to the Sailing Aquatic Center. At that time, no one had an idea of what size that was going to be, what the vision was going to be, rightfully so. You know, you kind of say, "Well, let the city decide that. They know about, Parks and Rec knows what their needs are for a community center." So basically, that, that time has come, where, where those needs have been voiced and addressed in our Marina Park Committee meetings, which I'm a member of. And again, we all know this, but just to go back, it started with a larger community center with wedding and banquet capabilities. Everyone said, "No, that's not really what we want in the community center," so it was downsized to really serve, basically, non-commercial community activities, like club meetings, summer day camp, senior services, yoga classes, music classes, you know, Parks and Rec-type facility, activities. So I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, way back when, we slotted in a community center because that was voiced as something that people wanted. And now, this, it's really up to the city to decide what their needs are as far as the size of the building and all that, we realize that. So I think that, you know, Jan's point of, yes, we need a community center, where should it be, you know, is, is, is one that, you know, the council obviously has to decide, but I just wanted to kind of give you that background that, you know, it was always in the plan, but we really weren't the deciders of, you know, the size or anything like that. And, and really, the committee has, has, has vetted that, and now, you know, we're where we're at, so that's kind of my point there.
Question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just had a question. Craig, would you, would you say that there's been adequate opportunity?
Tom.
I'm sorry, Tom.
Craig, Craig Moore sits also on our, on our steering committee.
Because I have a memo here from Craig that I was just looking at. But in any event, would you say that there's been reasonable opportunity for public input along the way on this, in terms of the programming and functionality of the site?
I, I think, you know, early on, like going three, back, back three years, our group, Protect Our Parks, was maybe about 100 people and, and, and that would get things by email. And then in our meetings, which were very, pretty regular, because we were in the heat of the battle with Measure L, there were probably maybe from 20 to, you know, 30 people coming to the meetings, and we were constantly communicating. And all, but most of those people were from the peninsula. Okay, at that time, it was, you know, and we were also, by the way, I'll, I'll share, I know I'm going around my time, but we were sharing our vision plan after the No on L to different groups, Peninsula Point Community Association, Central Newport, we went to speak up Newport. So it was, it was, it was explained, you know, and shown, the concept plan with Dan Herman's help at that time in, in drawing it to a lot of different groups. I think what's happened is, you know, it was sort of a, sort of linear view of, on, on a chart. Now we're seeing, okay, now we're really going to build it, and, 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 and here's what it's going to look like. We did, like I said, we didn't have an idea of what the building looked like. But in recent months, we've had, how many meetings, like eight meetings or so, which have been open to the public. I think some of the people didn't know about the meetings early on, but the last few months they have, and they've come and voiced their opinion. So I, I think it kind of got off the radar from those early days for a couple of years, because it was sort of on, you know, whole, we didn't know, you know, you know, what the, the, the council was, was weighing all these eight different concept plans. But I would say that, yeah, there's been adequate, you know, from our part, we did everything we could to get it out there, in other words, to all the different community associations groups.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. I'm going to make a suggestion here on this. You know, first of all, in terms of, you know, the public process of this project, I've been involved in this literally since I got on the council, and the first part of the time was looking at the alternative plans that Mr. Billings mentioned. And then once the, the Marina Park concept was, was developed, the visitor-serving marina with the park, we reactivated our Marina Park Committee, and myself and Councilman Hen and Councilman Webb have been on it ever since. It's been over a year. We meet on a monthly basis, so I'm thinking we've probably had at least 15 meetings, 14 meetings, something of that nature. And they're all publicly noticed, and the, it's, it's a very diverse committee, it's not just city councilmen, it's every conceivable interest group we could put together on the, on the committee to come in and weigh in on the different issues, from the harbor and boating interests to canoeing and the kayaking and park interests, community representatives. So I don't know of a committee that's had as much outreach and noticing. I've reported on it at city council meetings on the progress of it, so I certainly think it hasn't been something that's been done under the radar or behind the scenes or anything. It's been a very public and a very open process, and very successful, in my opinion. What I'd like to suggest is that we, we consider accepting the park and recreation staff's recommendation on the size, as was stated before, we've already downsized it once, and they can speak to that if the council desires on how they arrived at their recommendations, but I would recommend that we stick with their, with their recommendations for the But I would recommend that we stick with their, with their recommendations for the community center. And as to the, as to the height of the building, I guess I would agree that, that we go ahead and we limit the height to the 35-foot height limit in the shoreline height zone, except that I would hate to see us have a architecturally bland building there. And one of the criteria that we gave the architect was to show a little of imagination and a little bit of boldness in designing this building, so it just didn't become another bland building, and it had some architectural character. So I would add to that, that we make an exception for the architect to be able to add some architectural feature or features that would exceed the 35-foot height limit. But they would only be architectural features, no large volume areas or floor area or anything of that nature, something to give the building, building character. So that would be what I would suggest. I, I can't make a motion on it, but I'll let that up to one of the council members if they desire to do that.
A question on that. Is there any functional reason for the buildings being the height that they are? Or is it a, a design factor as far as those, those heights at this point?
I think there are some functional elements involved in it, but there's also some design elements in it. To, to my knowledge, there's no reason that functionally we could not take the major portion of the building down to 35 feet. I don't, I don't know of any on it. And I don't think it would destroy the design at all to do that. I see the architect shaking his head, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The sailing center and the, and the, and the community center. But allow him some freedom to create some architectural interest with some architectural features or a feature that would extend above 35 feet height limit.
I would move for that.
I'll second that.
Does, does anyone on the council want to hear from Wes Morgan or Sean on the, on how they arrived at the, the, the size of the community center? Are we satisfied with information in the staff report that we've got that covered?
It's, my understanding that we were looking at something that's roughly 21,000 square feet, and the footprint probably has around 11, 10 or 11,000 square feet.
That's correct.
That's only about, the footprint is only about 2% to 3% of the entire site. So I, I don't think that we have overprogrammed the site from the standpoint of taking up a very large volume. I remember Mr. Billings and a lot of his early presentations from Protect Our Parks showing the sailing center and, and community center there. I think we have a, one that's there today. I think we have, we should replace that. We've worked really hard to set the building far enough away from the, the street to where you can have views down the sides. And as far as the overall height is concerned, I'm not as concerned about the 35-foot limit or a 40-foot limit or a 28-foot limit. I think that we need to have a building that is of interest and character that stands out as being, somebody drives by and says, that's not just another flat-roofed cottage on, on our peninsula, that's a sailing center or that's a community center in Newport Beach. So I'm not nearly as concerned about holding it to 35 or 36 feet. I noticed that one of the things that I kind of feel good about as I drive down Balboa Boulevard, another block farther, you have the, the, it's not Our Lady, but the Mount Carmel Catholic Church, which has the, the steeple and, and provides some character to that building. You have the pavilion, which has the cupolo up on top and the very tall roof that stands out. It, it, it says, that's a, that's a, a building that, that is a landmark on our bay that you can, you can point to, that looks really great. You look at the lifeguard headquarters. Before it was remodeled in the early 90s, it was a very dull and drab, flat-roofed facility. We were able to put an architectural feature on top of that that gave it some character, that gave it some interest. And so that I would really hate to see us hold to a flat height limit at the expense of architectural features. So I think that what you definitely said is, is something that, that can work, but I, I would want to make sure that if we need to go to 36 feet because of something, or maybe 34 feet, that, that we, we can do it. I, I want the building to look great. I want it to be something that we can really be proud of.
Well, I think the architect has pretty well stated, he can work with his design within the 35-foot height limit and give us what we want.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Curry. I know at the time, when we were considering the construction of the Newport Coast Community Center, a lot of people said that would never be used, that the community really didn't want it, they all had their own neighborhood amenities. And clearly, that is shown to be not the case. It's got tremendous usage far beyond what we projected in terms of its initial, first year use. It's, it's a tremendous focal point in the community, and I have every belief that this community center would serve the same purpose on the peninsula, as a means of bringing the community together, as a focal point for the community, and as a, as a means of, of helping to unite and, and define the community. And I, I agree with Councilmember Webb's comments, that what we want is, is a statement of our community comparable to what we have in Newport Coast, but, but appropriate for the peninsula. And I think your motion, the one thing that had concerned me about this site was the massing and the height. And I think, and your motion or your recommendation for this motion provides the leeway to the architects with some specific direction to, to design architecturally significant buildings, but at the same time, the sensitivity to the neighbors and to the view and to the height issue.
Counselor Manon.
Yes, I support the motion as well. And I, I do want to make sure we understand the history of this to put just a little finer point on Tom Billings' comments. I've got, Craig Morissette sent us a memo that I thought was well done. And attached to it was the original survey work from Press Protect Our Parks, which showed overwhelmingly that a community center was a desired feature in this park. 61% voted yes, 0% voted no for a community center. Now that's, and there was similar overwhelming support for a sailing center. So that's not to say that we should build a big, a building that's bigger than it needs to be. We should not do that. And I think we can reduce the size of the building, respond to some of the public input that we've had just very recently. And the only caveat that I would have is just make sure staff has rechecked the programming for the sailing center and the use of that center to make sure that this reduction in height, and it is a real reduction in height we're talking about here, to go to 35 feet, won't cause any problems. And so we don't have a community center on the west side of Newport. That's certainly as capable as this one will be. I'm very much for that. I hear strains of thought frequently around the peninsula, which is my district, that it's a stepchild, that it doesn't get the same level of attention and investment as other areas of the city. I'm very much for this park. I'm very much for having some investment in the west side of Newport Beach that, in the nature of a community center, that we can also be proud of. And I feel confident by the time we get done here, that it won't be bigger than it needs to be, or taller than it needs to be. And I'm glad to maintain this 35-foot height limit with allowance for some architectural interest and feature associated with it, so that it's not just a box. So with that, I'll turn it back to the other side.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll call for the question. Please vote.
Motion, Curry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is current business, item number 20, the update on funding and construction for the Upper Bay dredging project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I believe this, this was a request of, of Councilmember Gardner to, in effect, restate a presentation that she and I heard at the watershed executive committee, of which she is a member, and to give the council and the community a little bit of briefing about the upper Newport Bay project. So if I could have your indulgence, Councilmember Hen, to dim the lights just a little bit. So what is the Upper Bay project supposed to do? It's supposed to manage sediment deposition in the bay, meaning catch a lot of the sediment that comes down from upstream, the cities of Lake Forest, Tustin, and Irvine. It's intended to reduce the frequency of dredging so that it's, has enough capacity so that we don't have to keep going back in there every four to five years. The goal is a 21-year period. To also improve or restore estuarine habitats and to improve public use and access, and then meet the goals of what's called the sediment total maximum daily load. That's a regulation placed on the city, many cities in the watershed and the county, to minimize dredging in that, in the Upper Bay. So here, I'm going to show you a map with the features. This is what you'll see. You'll see two sediment basins that are intended to be dredged to negative 20, and access channels dredged to negative 14. You'll see those in blue. You'll see some side channel restoration. This is to actually enhance the, the number of islands and the quality of those islands, so those are more protected from predation by coyotes and cats and dogs, et cetera. To restore areas from the disturbed upland to an intertidal habitat, to make a new leastern island, and to segment the old salt dyke. So here's a map that shows those things. You'll see, just for bearing of folks at home, this is Coast Highway, this is Jamboree and MacArthur. These are the two main basins that we're trying to create. They're already there to some extent, they're just not deep enough. And then these are the additional channels around some of the islands, again, to protect these islands and the birds that may nest on them from predation.
Dave?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Webb.
What is this? Wasn't that taken out?
That, that is a modified version of what was taken out. We're, we're protecting North Star Beach as north, as the NAC desires. And this project, so it's much smaller, and then more of the mud flat will be created up here.
What do you mean by much smaller?
Well, it's actually, part of this is underway today, and it's really just a grading of the beach area. You, I believe you can go out and see it if you'd like. It's, because I was by there the other day. It's not, remember the NAC's original concern was that we were going to dredge way back in there and create new mud flat. And they, of course, said that that was now unusable space to them for a lot of their, their bigger activities. So it will remain usable, it won't be mud flat. Instead, the mud flat will be moved up here.
Okay, well, I, I was there a couple of weeks ago, and I noticed that the whole site is essentially, hasn't changed, but there was a significant amount of grading and excavation and a large line that went up into this area. Why, do you know what they're, what they're doing with the, the material that's being taken out of here and pumped upstream?
If I understand their, the purpose correctly, they're moving some of the material and to, to enhance the channels and the islands further upstream, including the leastern island, the new one that's being built.
And that's up here?
Correct. Actually, it's not on this map. It's roughly, it's here.
Okay, because I, I know that we had initially said that we really wanted to try to keep the area adjacent to NAC open for things other than a, a wetlands or mud flats there, because that potentially, I think, from a recreational standpoint, it provides still a, a great resource for us.
And you're, you're correct, Mr. Webb, and we did do that. You, you don't see it in this phase, because it's, it's actually in Phase 2. And we'll talk about that, because that's where the funding concern comes in. So the NAC won't be touched in Phase 1, it won't be touched in Phase 2. But the fact that we moved that project up to the Santa Isabel Channel area, sorry, which is up here, I missed it the first time, was an additional cost, and we'll talk about that in just a second.
Dave, can you go back to that slide again? I got one question. What does segmenting the salt dyke mean?
I was afraid somebody would ask me that. There is the, the old salt dyke, which is basically here, and the intent is to break that up more, so there's better tidal flow in it. The, the salt dyke was a fairly firm structure, and if we can, if we can break it up more, we get more tidal influence back up, further up the bay, which is better habitat value.
Why, why wouldn't we just remove it?
If, if you removed it, you'd get more into the habitat in this area, which is of highly valued habitat. It's more of the marshland, and actually, doing construction in there was something that was too sensitive to do in this project.
Okay, isn't it an area where you have a lot of light-footed clapper?
You do. You have a light-footed clapper there in the leastern. Just for folks at home, this is an example of the smaller dredge. This is a suction dredge, or hydraulic dredge. And it's up, it's up here in this, this drawing here. That's what it's, it's doing that work there. It's basically as simple as that, just sucks the mud up, and it moves it down a pipe, which eventually goes into the scowl. This is the scowl and the big clamshell dredge, and they're also up in one of the upper basins. This is a, a little bit more elaborate picture of, and this includes work done, and it starts to look at Phase 2. You could see this one here, the 23rd Street wetland restoration is what Mr. Webb and I were speaking of just a moment ago. You could see the NAC is left alone in this slide, and probably in hindsight, I probably should have pulled the first slide, because it was, again, a Phase 1 look. This is a Phase 2 look. You could see some of the other restoration activities there. So let's talk about the status. Phase 1 is due to be complete next month. So all of those things in that first chart are scheduled to be done, except for, of course, the NAC, that wasn't, was pulled. And the next construction includes a number of different things. This wetland restoration at NAC, that's officially what it's called. Again, it's being moved to 23rd Street, dredging in unit 1-3, removing one of the islands up high and moving that. There's some scour protection kiosks and monitoring. This is the funding history of the project. You can see that especially from 2004 on to 2009, there has been no funding in the federal share in the president's budget. And not to bore you too much, but basically how it works is the president introduces a budget, and then Congress works on it. And if your item is not in the president's budget, you have to work a lot harder to get it in there, because it becomes an earmark. And you folks know the sensitivity of earmarks lately. So we've been successful in getting these into the budgets after it goes through Congress. And then sometimes it gets a little bit of a haircut, like you saw right there and there. But a couple of times, we were able to get the full $5 million for, for the project. And then the latest version, the year that we're in now, is 2.2 million. This next one is a snapshot of kind of where we are in the whole project. So the initial estimates were 38.5. Of course, fuel costs have gone up. We moved the NAC restoration to 23rd Street. So the total project cost is now estimated at 42 million. That chart, if you add it up on the previous slide, adds up to about 14.6 million. There's 13.5 million from the state that the voters approved through Prop 12. So basically, we're short 13.8 million to complete Phase 2. So the risk, as Councilmember Gardner knows, is that we'll stop here at Phase 1, just say, that's it, we're out of money.
Dave, of the 13.8, how much of that needs to be local match, and how much of it is potentially attributable to the feds?
It's 100% attributable to the feds, Councilmember Curry, and that's because the, those, the locals have met their match. We were fortunate enough to meet our match through the state bond funds. And when the federal government considers quote-unquote "local match," they look at state money, too. So it's a federal obligation to pay that 13.8. So here are some alternatives we've been working on to keep the project going. We and the county, and we've encouraged other cities to do this as well, we submitted appropriations requests to get another 12.3 million in the, this, the fiscal year that will start in October. We've sent letters, thanks to the mayor, to the congressional delegation. We're also looking at something I'll talk briefly about, and that is reprogramming. And that happens when you have a U.S. Army Corps project that is, has not been utilized in, in another area, and that potentially you can free up that money and move it over to this project that's actively underway. We've also, the local district folks of the Corps have been really good about visiting our congressional members, because they want to keep this project going. You guys also saw the big petition from the chamber. We're trying to strategize as to what exactly to do with that. We're figuring, we're going to just get those to our members of Congress, so they can see how important this is. And then we've also, we're, I'm working with the upstream cities to ramp up the letter Couple of other things we're doing, too. We have a Prop 50 project request in. We're also going to the state coastal conservancy, again, to look for maybe existing funds where they allocated it to a project somewhere else and didn't use it. Same with the wildlife conservation board. This is an important one, because it's a partner agency of the Fish and Game Department. This is an important one, because it's a partner agency of the Fish and Game Department, and most of the Upper Bay is in the Fish and Games control. And then we've put the upstream partners on notice that each agency should be prepared to help if need be, especially to match state funds if they become available. And to your point, Councilmember Curry, if we have to get Prop 50 funds, we may have to kick in another match, but if somehow the federal government comes in, we won't have to do that. And then there's a relatively small source of funds called SEPs. Those are penalties assessed to dischargers that illegally discharge into the Santa Ana River watershed, which this is included. We're looking at trying to get some of those sent this way.
Dave, do we have any ability to compel the upstream funding partners to actually fund?
Yes and no. There's an agreement that dates back to 1989 that says, "We're all parties and partners to the TMDL." And this was before I got to the city, but if I were writing the agreement today, I'd write it a little stronger. So the agreement exists that partially obligates them, but to me, the overarching obligation is the TMDL itself. We're all bound by the TMDL to create a dredging project that will allow this once every 20-year dredging, 21-year dredging, and this one is it. If we don't do it, the regional board could potentially sanction all of us. So I think that's pretty compelling. Let's talk briefly about other issues. I'm almost done here. Would a city loan work, maybe to front the money? It could, but it's problematic. The federal government has said, "Well, if you front that, there's no guarantee we'll pay you back," and the Corps has made no promises there. I spoke briefly about reprogramming. The key to that, the problem with that, is that somewhere else, the member of Congress has to agree to give up those funds for his or her district. That's pretty challenging to get them to do. And then, just so everybody knows, if the project stops and then starts again, could be a $2 million additional cost just to demobilize the existing contractor and bring on somebody else again. And the other issue, as I mentioned to you, the Phase 2 costs are rising. The existing contractor is being asked to bid on Phase 2 already, but they've significantly increased their per-unit costs, in part because of the increases in the cost of fuel.
The other potential cost of demobilization is that we could not, we would get dropped from Army Corps of Engineer funding, because we were not active and another project was active.
That's right.
And they would give those funds the nod.
That's right. So for more information for folks at home, we have a website up with the Newport Bay ecosystem restoration project. You can use this emails to send direct, sorry, use this website to send direct emails to Congress. Tom Rossmiller is our local expert for a short time. Tom's retiring. And there's the folks at the county that we work with. So with that, Mr. Mayor, complete.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions, Dave?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Dave, has there been any thought to maybe using some mitigation funds for many other projects, such as power plants or anything like that, maybe up and down the state, like have been used for restoration? This certainly isn't restoration, but it's almost preservation and maybe restoration in some terms.
To some extent, yes, Homer. We've looked at especially the ports of LA and Long Beach, and they often have mitigation requirements. The catch for us is that we're a little far from that, and they tend to end up spending that a little bit closer, like in Bolsachica, and indeed, they're being required to do more restoration even right around the ports, but that is still an option if it's ever made available to us.
Councilman Curry.
Dave, what is the timeframe in which we're going to have to make a decision on demobilization, assuming no additional federal funding?
We think the decision will have to be made in May or June, so it's coming up quickly, which is why we're really pushing, Councilmember Daigle, or Mayor Pro Tem Daigle, who's not here tonight, is helping me out in our conversations with Senator Feinstein to see if we can see that, maybe do some reprogramming right away to save it, and/or make sure we get something into the budget language right away.
Well, I will say, as I was in Washington, D.C. yesterday on transportation funding, it's a bleak, as you know, it's a bleak picture there. Senator Feinstein has certainly been very helpful to us in the past, as is Congressman Campbell and Congressman Royce. Congressman Royce actually made a special note that Ken Calvert from Riverside has been very helpful to us in obtaining funding in the future. So we've got a good delegation support, but a very uphill battle, given the federal budget constraints and the priorities in Washington to address this.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. I'd like to adjourn this evening's meeting, first, in the memory of Gail Kirwin. Gail struggled with illness for the last decade of her life. Her community spirit never dimmed, and neither did her sense of humor. She was a dedicated philanthropist in the community. She was a board member of the Hoag Foundation since 2002. Kirwin also won renown for her support of the Orange County Performing Arts Center, Orange County Museum of Art, Opera Pacific, and other arts organizations and nonprofits, and she will be sorely missed in our community. Also, I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Gary Proctor, a former council member, who served our city from his election in 2000 to his resignation in 2003. He left Newport Beach to permanently relocate his family to Northern California. Gary was well-known in our community and will be remembered for his dedication to advocating an airport at El Toro and for protecting our community from continued expansion of John Wayne Airport. He was able to apply his experience as an attorney and a pilot to his service on the Orange County Airport Commission and as chairman of the El Toro Citizens Advisory Committee. In all, he gave this community 20 years of service as an elected or appointed official. Gary was intelligent, fair, and always well-informed about the issues being debated, and I wish to extend our sincere condolences to his family. So we will adjourn the meeting to 3:30 p.m. on March 25th.